I'm going to call the Wednesday, February twenty six, two thousand twenty five meeting of Essex Junction City Council to order. There any agenda additions or changes?
None for me.
Amber, do we have you?
I am here.
Awesome, great. No agenda additions or changes. So we'll move on to public to be heard. This is the point of the meeting where folks can bring up comments, questions, concerns for the board on items that are on tonight's agenda and topics that are not. So is there's anyone, excuse me, on Zoom, please raise your hand. We do have one person in the room, so we'll start with the person that's here. If you want to come on up to the microphone and introduce yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
A couple of questions and then it's over.
Okay.
My name is George Dunbar. Just a couple of questions. The Governance Committee has started its work yet? And no, okay, I wasn't sure. I just know there was a short timeline. I just, I wonder what was going on with this. And the second was the audit report that should be coming out for the annual report. Is that available yet? Or will it be, or when will it be being presented to you? I guess probably a better question.
It's going to be presented to the council on the twelfth, March twelfth, their next meeting. Jess is in, is online here. Shh. Oh, there you go.
Okay, so now I'll get on the soapbox. I was coming tonight to revisit my concerns from a month ago on how the council was choosing to portray the FY twenty four financials in our FY twenty six budget. But I'm going to set that aside for a moment, accepting the response that I got last time that, you know, the LCT has given you some guidance. The auditors have given you guidance and hopefully the city's attorney has been involved to make sure that we're not in any compromised position going forward with that document. But I've been looking over the websites of nearby communities attempting to educate myself more on the matter of stormwater utilities when I came across an interesting table in Williston's Town Report for two thousand twenty six. The table listed the municipal tax rates in Chittenden County where full services are offered. A full-service municipality being defined as one who provides core services of police, fire, emergency services and Public Works through municipal staff and contracts. What community, what community do you think I found at the top of that list? None other than Essex Junction at ninety-eight cents for fiscal year twenty five. That rate was nineteen percent higher than the second highest community, Burlington, and thirty-four, thirty-four percent higher than Essex Town. I tried to grasp why we were so far out of the box. Four of the towns operated at a lower tax rate, roughly forty percent lower, without the benefit of the additional sales tax revenue you'd see through the local options tax. I considered road mileage as a driver, but didn't see any relationship, nor was there a relationship I could find for population. I'm still trying to comprehend how the city could be so far out of the mix for tax rate. I continue to look for structural reasons for such a distinct ranking, and I have a thought. At last year's community luncheon and budget presentation, a woman stated per the minutes, and I quote, "One of the common expectations from separation with a town was that taxes would go down and that a tax increase as presented here will lead to an erosion of trust in local officials and will set the stage for negative consequences over time." I would add, I couldn't agree more. So how, so how did we get to where we are today? I was never pro-separation or pro-merger. I was anti-status quo. Remaining in the relationship with a town as it had existed just didn't seem tenable to me, and I was sure we would continue to rehash the separation/merger question at some frequency, diverting resources from issues of greater importance. In two thousand twenty-one, we found our way to independence, and with it were perceptions and documented estimates of anticipated cost savings. Public hearings touted a government that would be eight hundred thousand dollars cheaper to operate and an expected seven percent reduction in the tax rate. What transpired was far from what was advertised. In FY twenty-four, our first full year of separation, there was ultimately no apparent savings and no change in tax rate. While disappointed, I could accept that outcome. Though the margin of error from the estimated savings was quite high, it was a big undertaking, undoing a hundred-plus years of a relationship with a town. Surely, the next year, the year we're in now, we would start to see the estimated savings of independent operation. And of course, we'd now have the full force of the new revenue stream of the local option tax. Roughly a million dollars a year or about ten percent on the tax rate, or ten cents on the tax rate. How could we not see some drop in operational spending in the tax rate with this convergence of efficiency and new revenue? Some positive outcomes were inevitable. It was here that that erosion of trust the speaker at the two thousand twenty-four luncheon spoke about began to set in for me, and I suspect with many more in the community. What we saw instead was a five percent increase in spending and a corresponding five percent increase in the tax rate. Again, no indication there was any attempt or effort to move toward reduced spending and tax rates that had been anticipated based on information shared at the onset of this journey. Ultimately, FY twenty-six budget has completely undermined any foundation of that trust that may have remained. It has become apparent the council has no desire to even attempt to move towards the operational savings advertised and to restrain spending. How could the council provide direction to provide a budget of no greater than three percent if there was any interest to achieve a reduction in tax rate as those separation informational meetings purported to be feasible? While I'll give some credit that the initial budget presented in December was at a, at least at a value of less than the three percent directed cap, with a two percent increase in spending in subsequent months since that initial presentation, that has now been allowed to creep to that maximum guidance of three percent in expenditures. But let's be clear, that is three percent with stormwater expenses formerly in the two thousand twenty-five budget, but no longer in the two thousand twenty-six budget. Those expenses have been moved to the enterprise fund and mask the true impact of the general fund's spending decisions. To keep a year-to-year, apples-to-apples comparison, you really need to look at the budget with stormwater expenses as if they remained in the FY twenty-six general fund, which result in about a real six-point-six percent increase in spending and a five-point-five percent increase in the tax rate. As I said earlier, I had some thoughts on why Essex Junction has significantly higher tax rate other than comparably structured communities, and it seemed it's simply there is no desire to restrain ourselves from spending, no desire to pursue the anticipated lower tax rates that were presented as we began our journey to become a city. So I'm not really sure to where to go from here. There's the old adage, where there's a will, there's a way, but it seems there is no will to pursue what was at one time reported to be in our reach. I hope you make an effort to benchmark ourselves against these communities, look for opportunities, understand how other communities are apparently so much more efficient, whether it's in staffing, purchasing, innovation, and all the myriads of inputs of providing these services. There must be some pretty apparent reasons why we have the dubious honor of having the highest tax rate in the county.
Can I ask? George, can I just ask you the link that you referenced and from the Willis, from the town of Williston?
Yep.
If you have it or if you can email it to me, that would be.
I can send you the link or I'll get it.
Send it to the group. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Moving on to, oh, sorry, online, pardon me. Going back. I saw a hand, Grant. You wouldn't mind introducing yourself when I'm meeting?
Plows have come through during the winter. My parking lot, which is only four cars wide, but it's there to facilitate parents being able to come and pick their kids up from my after-school program. That parking lot has been completely blocked off every time. This last major snowstorm that came through resulted in a three-and-a-half-foot wall of salted ice that sat out in front and basically made my business completely inaccessible. Granted, I, I pay taxes as a resident, I pay taxes as a business owner too. And I had sent an email the last time this had happened over to Public Works saying, or send a call, and I said, hey, is there, you know, I'm getting kind of tired of having to do this every single time. Is there any way that we can just make sure the, the opening to the, the parking lot's cleared, just so this, could we push it down just a little bit further just to kind of get that out of the way? And I get that if it's not possible, it's not possible, but that wasn't what was said to me. What was said to me is that it was possible and we're very sorry about it. So I was like, oh, thank you so much for hearing me. Well, that next snowstorm came through, three-and-a-half-foot wall of salt and water and snow, and it fuses together to the point where it creates a barrier that is inaccessible, like you can't pass it without chopping it down. So it makes a situation for which myself as a small business owner is kind of being penalized, and I have a very tiny business, all things considered. But it is, makes my business inaccessible to my guests, to my customers, to my students and their parents. And that, when I got all of this information together, I packed it all in an email, sent it off to them and said, hey, this is exactly what I'm talking about. The parking lot snow itself was only about three-quarters up the way of my boot, which is a lot of snow. But then, when you look at the wall next to it on the other side of the sidewalk facing Pearl Street, it's a three-and-a-half-foot wall of ice. I'm a six-foot-two man. Like, it's larger than half of my leg. Sure, go right ahead.
So are they, I mean, we'll follow up on this and somebody to get back to. Just say that right off the top, but I am curious not to belabor this, but are they taking snow from an intersection and putting it there or just driving down the street and the snow ends up there as a part of driving down the street with the plow?
I, I, without me being able to watch it happen, I'm not sure, but it's one of those things where in either case, it winds up creating a full-on wall that I have to physically go outside and chop down.
Different from what happens to everybody else's driveway when the plow goes down the road?
Not sure, I'm not sure if it's different at all. And, and I'm not sure because I had walked down and talked to other businesses and said, hey, do you have this problem where you have the snowplows coming through and creating a giant barrier, making it impossible to get inside your business, like the, the gas station that was right down the street? There's the Key Bank that's right next door, and both of them, and I don't know whether I talked to people in charge or anything like that, but what both people who I talked to had said, no, that's not, that, that doesn't happen to us. Even my next-door neighbor who, who has to like cut his stuff away because naturally that, you know, backs up there as well. He says, I have to cut my stuff away, but it looks nothing like yours. It's on the corner of South Summit and Pearl. After I'd taken the pictures, after I'd taken the pictures and taken a look at it, I went down to that gas station to ask that question, but I got a bottle of water on the way there because I'm out there trying to like figure out, okay, how am I going to chop all this stuff down? And I did chop it down the next day. Took about four and a half hours of work, but the, as I'm coming up to the street, I'm coming to the stop sign, or the stoplight, rather. And I witnessed in front of me, I am a direct front seat witness to watch someone run through a red light and almost plow into the front end of a school bus. Luckily, the school bus driver was able to turn. There was a collision, minor damage, no children were hurt. But the reason why she had to pull out so far to begin with is because she had to dodge a three-foot ice wall. So it, it's, I understand that sometimes these are kind of the way things are, and I'm not trying to sit here and ask for special attention like I'm some sort of like, you know, special person deserving of something that no one else gets. But when it comes to safety and it comes to accessibility, I am now looking at a repeated problem in which I have to either spend a lot of my time and energy taking down something that's far larger than anyone else's driveway, and I have to deal with the prospect of paying someone to come in and knock that away after my tax revenues have already caused the problem. So it, it just seems almost like I'm kind of being penalized a bit. And I know that seems very silly to say out loud, but it's true. I've had to deal with it for years now to the point where it's become more problem than what it's worth. So just throwing that out there to see if maybe there's some way of possibly finding a different way to do stuff. Maybe we're not trying to be forced to pay to have snow knocked out of the way. And I know maybe that's just the way things are around here. Totally fine with it if that's the case. But like, like the gentleman said before, when there's a will, there's a way, right?
We'll definitely get back to you, and if this is something that can be, you know, mitigated where it's not, if there's something that can be mitigated, we'll let you know, for sure.
Thank you so much.
I don't, I don't know the details on it, so I hesitate to venture in.
No, I appreciate, just appreciate your attention. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Grant.
Yes.
Yep. Okay, thank you. All right, is there anyone else online that has a question, comment, concern for public to be heard? Please raise your hand. I'm not seeing anyone. So I am going to move on and open the public hearing on proposed land development code amendments. And welcome, Chris Yuan, our community development director, to run us through an overview.
All right, yes, so I am Chris Yuan, the community development director for the city of Essex Junction, and there are a set of slides within the council packets that I'll go over some of today. It is the same slides, it's mostly the same slides as, as the last few times this has been discussed on December eighteenth and, and January twenty-second. But I have highlighted a, a few more things on here and updated as appropriate. So so first of all, this, the set of land development code amendments is separate from the work that is being done with the Transit Oriented Development Master Plan. That is intended to be a much larger project looking at land use, future land use, and, and streetscape improvements along the Pearl Street and Park Street corridor. That project, while it is delayed with the federal funding issues, it, it is still anticipated to, to be carried to completion, and out of that will be additional changes to the land development code and also probably comprehensive plan update, feed, feedback that will go into the comprehensive plan update. Today, we are talking about the two thousand twenty-four land development code amendments, and these are a set of technical adjustments and, and what I would consider minor fixes. Now, minor fixes and technical adjustments, this is minor when you are comparing this with what is allowed in many cases and what historically has been built in Essex Junction. It, it's, the reason why these are, these are being proposed is because I do believe they will make a difference. So in some ways, this is not minor. But it's, it's relative to what is otherwise allowed by the land development code right now, and also what is out there, or real examples that we can see. And we'll go over some of those examples. So topics that are included, rewrite of the sign regulations to be content neutral. Number two, adjustments of residential density limits to meet statutory requirements and to, to reduce barriers to a small-scale housing construction. Number three, adjustment of sites dimensional and design standards for small-scale developments. Number four, changes to stormwater regulations. And then also the regulation of food trucks and correction of technical inconsistencies. Now, sign regulations, this has been discussed in the past. What is proposed is meant to be content neutral. And also it is meant to be more, more user-friendly and organized in a different way. You can see here, just the, the way it was organized before was all text. Now there's, you know, a lot more visual examples, descriptions, and it's just meant to be easier to interpret, easier to enforce, and easier to communicate. Notable changes is that this is content, this is, it is meant to be content neutral. So wall size limits for small storefronts have been also slightly increased. And yeah, election period signs within the right-of-way are now clarified to be allowed during the two weeks leading up to election. This is different from election period signs on private property, which is also regulated in the sign, the sign section. What remains the same as discussed last time with the city council, sandwich boards, there's no change at this time from existing regulations. So it's only allowed during business hours and must be within fifteen feet of the front door. And there's an eight-square-foot maximum size. I will note when this was being reverted back to the existing regulations, there, there was also an exemption for municipal properties for public messaging that was put back, but it was put back in a different section because this is now organized differently. Now also note that the exemption as currently written on, actually, the exemption in the existing land development code applies only to sandwich board signs, but it's a little more broad the way it's organized now with this, with this current version. The city does not anticipate changing practices, like changing our operations based on this, this new exemption. But it's just important to note that it's there. Residential density limits, there are changes to meet statutory requirements, reduce barriers to small-scale housing construction, and also to enable a smooth density transition between the city center and the R-one and R-two zones. And I will go over each of these points a little more just to explain. So one of the changes was that in the, in, out of the two thousand twenty-three Home Act, every place, every zoning district that allowed a single-family house where there's a water and sewer is supposed to allow for four units as well. We overlooked making that change for the MF-three zoning district. Now this is corrected. And just in terms of the concepts of what the planning commission had thought about over here. Planning Commission thought of the city as, you know, several distinct sets of zones. There's, there are these high-density zones in red. They're relatively high-density. There's, you know, you're allowed to build in many cases, I think, four stories. This is what you would expect the, the, the larger multifamily developments to be located. And then there are these medium-density kind of transition zones. It's called the residential office district and also the multifamily three district. And then what, there's these, the, the residential zones, R-one, R-two, also the planned agriculture district. All of these districts, as long as there's water and sewer, allows for four units. So and, and we'll get back to why, why this is important in a sec as well for several reasons. The MF-three and RO districts currently have incremental lot size requirements, which, which read something like this. So minimum lot size shall be seven thousand five hundred for the first dwelling unit plus certain three thousand for each additional dwelling units. So the proposed amendments would remove this requirement. And just, just so you know, the, all the, I've highlighted the, the outcome in red in all of these slides. Many properties already exceed this limit, and, you know, we've gone over these examples. I don't really dwell on them, but some, these are, these are examples that I, I think don't really stand out from, just from the streets. For East Street, for example, six thousand five hundred thirty square feet, according to the, the existing rules, it would only allow for one unit, but it has two. I mean, is it a big deal? I think most people would probably say, not really. Six Grove Streets, about nine thousand square feet. It has two units, would only allow, current regs would only allow one. Five Grove Street, current regs were only allowed two, but actually this one has eight. This is, they've got parking at the back over here. That's kind of why this, it's a, you, you can't really see it from this side. It, it does look a little bit, it does stand out a little bit more from the other side, but, you know, just an example of here. The other change that's the planning commission had put together is a, a increase of the maximum number of units per lot going from four to six in the, these, the RO and MF-three districts. These are the districts that are meant to be somewhere in between the, the, the high-density kind of the, the city, the, the village center district and also the, you know, what's along Pearl Street and somewhere between that and the residential districts. There are also adjustments of a dimensional and design standards. These were inspired by two initiatives at the state level. There's the Enabling Better Places zoning guide and also the Vermont's Homes for All Toolkit. If anyone ever has a, is looking for inspiration for how, how, you know, more, more housing units could be added to any existing lots, small lots, there are plenty of examples of here. This, the guide looks something like this, but the point here is that the planning commission took these, the, these housing typologies, these, these, you know, these layouts and tried to fit them within real lots in, in Essex Junction and compared and checked to see if, you know, they would run up against the existing regulations, and, you know, a lot of the, the proposals here are meant to address those barriers. So what was actually proposed here, there's a reduced minimum front yard setback to fifteen feet in, in several zoning districts. Many zoning districts are ready at fifteen. This, this just kind of standardizes it. It clarifies and adjusts design requirements for triplexes and fourplexes in, in the R-one and R-two zones and also allows for up to two principal residential structures per lot. So the reduced minimum front yard setback, the Enabling Better Places guidebook suggests that in what it considers to be neighborhood zones, so some, something that's a, that's similar to our, the, the RO or MF-three or even the, the residential R-one and R-two zoning districts, front setback should be somewhere between eight and twelve feet. And then there's, they have guide, they have suggestions for side and rear setbacks. We haven't really made many changes for that. But this is how the city's existing setbacks compare. We have certain zones where the front setback is thirty, twenty or thirty feet. And looking at what that actually looks like compared to what historically exists on the ground, this diagram shows the, the first, you know, like in, in the RO districts, the, the setbacks and the, the areas where if you were to build from scratch, you would not be allowed to build any. How much of these, the fronts of these buildings are within the front setback? And they're grandfathered in, so the proposal basically, oh yeah, here's another example, a more extreme example, the MF three district, front setbacks currently thirty feet proposed to be fifteen. And this is to to more closely aligned with really what is there right now, what what people know and expect the Essex Junction neighborhoods to look like. So also special design standards, this, there there was a lot of talk about the the layouts requirements for driveways and parking. Whenever you're trying to add residential units to existing lots, this is always a concern. And there's currently in the existing land development code, it says that parking shall not take up more than thirty percent or twenty feet of the linear frontage of the lots, whichever is less. But if this is interpreted strictly, this this basically doesn't work for 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 triplexes and fourplexes, you would you would need. Yeah, you would, you you need to, you need to find space somehow to to put the the additional cars on there. So the new proposed design standard splits this into three areas, area A, B, and C. And I'll just kind of go to the the outcome over here. Area A would be limited to twenty feet max unless, you know, unless there were, sorry, unless there were certain circumstances which really required it to be a little bit wider and then it would be you you would be allowed to make it, I think, twenty, twenty-seven feet. But as it's, as it's proposed, parking would be more encouraged to be at the side or back and where possible, it would be screened from view from the from the streets. This was one of the test cases, a real example of what's some, somebody came in to to the community development department and asked about whether or not they could, they could do something, they wanted to build, they wanted to to turn their existing duplex into a fourplex by repurposing the garage space and also adding adding living space above it. But the challenge was parking. This is what their lot looks like. A way to figure out a way to fit the four spaces without violating the twenty foot maximum width for the driveway. It's on many properties, it's quite difficult. The compromise here was that if you had, if you're converting to three units or above, you you would be allowed to widen up to twenty-seven feet max, so, you know, with some with a with a taper with the with a driveway kind of that that fans out after that. This would probably work for for many cases. So that's the driveways. Allowing up to two principal structures per lot, this is a a fairly significant change, but also, you know, I'll explain here why, in some ways, it it also it it also makes sense to consider this, you know, a technical amendment. So currently, you're allowed, obviously, a single family home, an accessory apartment which could be separate. You're also allowed to build a fourplex if you have enough space within one principal structure. So this is a real example, somebody with a duplex and an existing garage. They wanted to turn the 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 garage into another housing unit. They want, they actually wanted to live it live it themselves. Continue to rent out the other two units. And we told them, no, you're not allowed to do that because you're own, you can only have an accessory, accessory apartments, an accessory apartment has to be pertinent to a single family home. So that would, so if you change the garage to 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 an apartment, it would be considered another principal structure. So that's not allowed, but if the building was just bigger and it was all connected, under the current regulations, it is allowed. So what is proposed here is that is to allow for two principal structures per per lot, still a max of four units per lots. Some of the applications of this is that, you know, you might be able to put in, say, a tiny home that's separate from your your house and or your your duplex or triplex and still, you know, still fall within the the four units maximum, but have the two principal structures. There's something, there are some changes about buffering requirements for triplexes and fourplexes as well. Basically, right now, with the current regulations, there's a fifteen foot buffer requirement for multi for for what's called, what's currently considered multifamily homes, so a duplex is not considered a multifamily home. So you only have to meet the ten, let's say, a ten foot side setback. But if you converted that duplex into a triplex, or if you if you apply to to do that, right now, we would say, no, not allowed. Here within the fifteen foot, fifteen foot buffer. So that's, that is, the proposed change here is to exclude triplexes and fourplexes from the definition of multifamily dwelling in the LDC. So they would still be subject to the other, the the normal setback requirements, but not the kind of additional buffer. There's a waiver option sometimes for multifamily dwellings. And the the purpose of this, of the buffer as is probably to to address shadow impacts and kind of massing impacts, visual impacts of large multifamily dwellings on a single family uses. So right now, it's, if you stayed fifteen feet away from the property line, you might be, you'd you'd be good, but the same if you if you organized this, if you designed the building a little bit differently, so it's wasn't actually, didn't actually have an additional massing impact, but you're within ten you're within the fifteen foot buffer, right now, it's not allowed. Even though it doesn't necessarily reflect actual impacts. So the proposed change would allow the DRB to grant waivers to the buffering requirements if they find no undue adverse impacts to neighbors. And the DRB has said that, to them, that's a pretty high bar, but it's it is, if it's, you know, if if it can be justified. There are changes to stormwater regulations with the with the stormwater regulations being moved to separate ordinances. There are also changes to the allowance for food trucks on private property to be able to permit them officially for continuous placements instead of treating them as temporary uses. There was an addition over here with the sound in terms of the the use of generators, they're severely limited under with the new regulations. And you are not allowed to run them outside of, you know, outside of the data, basically, I think. We tried to match the sound regulations the noise regulations, but you're also required to meet the noise regulations regardless. Yeah, so it would allow for year round operation and limits the use of generators. So there were some corrections of technical inconsistencies and other changes. One of, one of the ones I'll I'll mention here is the administrative review of triplexes and fourplexes. Right now, that would have to go to the DRB and be a rather expensive and slow process. Whereas duplexes right now can be administratively approved. This would extend the the way we treat duplexes to towards fourplexes. There's a additional clarity on on how lot coverage is defined. There was, there were some limits on unrelated persons living together in the same dwelling unit that's been removed, and this is actually required by statute now. There are some corrections to the zoning map that there there were some zoning changes made over a decade ago, that's that accidentally got taken out with a version control issue, I think, about ten years ago. There it's, it wasn't an intended change, this puts, this basically, and, you know, puts back what was intended to be there. And there's also a fifty foot setback for outdoor cannabis cultivations as enabled by act one sixty-six, of course, this, the the H, so act one sixty-six allowed municipalities to add this into in into a local regulation starting January first, obviously, this would only be when the LDC amendments are are approved. And that's it for my overview.
That was great. All right, so this is a public hearing, this is an opportunity for folks who are in attendance, members of the public online, to ask questions and we will do our best to either get answers now or return with those answers. Is there anyone in the room that has a question?
Yeah, I have a couple, actually.
Do you want to come on up?
Interesting conversation. Um, and I don't know if you can even speak to this, but do you know how the new statutes affect neighborhood covenants as far as their restrictions, if they're different, if they differ from that of the city?
I don't believe they they affect existing covenants.
Okay.
But they're, you know, since twenty twenty-three, you it had, you you aren't allowed to create new covenants, that's a limit.
That violates whatever is okay.
And that would, that, my understanding, I'm asking a question, so a renewal would trigger that inability to continue restriction. In other words, the twenty twenty-three changed not allowing these restrictions, if the nature they were to renew
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, that's
It's just, yeah, I mean, I happen to live in one of those neighborhoods. It always irritates me that we're more restrictive than what the city has, so that's why I was asking the question. The challenges of changing HOAs are, you have to have a hundred percent participation and all those other lovely things, there's lots of it.
You're very convincing, George.
What's that?
You can do it, you're very convincing.
I've thought about it, but our our annual meeting is March tenth, so that's why I was interested in bringing up some of these things. The only other thing that you spoke about that was interesting, you you mentioned for triplexes and fourplexes that they'll be now considered multifamily dwellings or more like duplexes, I guess. And you mentioned the buffer zone is being changed as a result of it. And you, I think you initially said that it was mostly due to visual or or visual effects or or shadow effects that may occur from the building being I guess the only thing that would concern me is that if you're adding more bodies to a building, there's also a sound effect that's associated with that, and I guess you know, if you add another unit with more people and now you're allowing it within ten feet, does that have any impact to the neighbors and just, just a question or something to consider? It was interesting.
Thank you. Is there anyone online that has any questions or comments on this topic tonight before we, while we're in a public hearing? Not seeing any hands raised, there's no one else in the room. So I will close the public hearing. And we will discuss this in more detail as a council later on this evening. Thank you, Chris, appreciate it. All right, we're moving on to business items, and the first item tonight is an interview in consideration of a Greenman Transit alternate board member. I believe we have Stephanie Clark, who's our applicant online with us.
Hello. Good, how are you?
If you could start, we we have, we've all had your application, I'm sure we've all read it. If you could just summarize for us, you know, your interest and experience, if you have anything that you'd like to add to to what you provided, that'd be great.
Sure, I grew up in Essex Junction. I'm a lifelong resident, I left for about ten years to go to school and work. So I have a lot of experience with the transit system here, I'm a non-driver, so it's a very important part of living in Essex Junction for me. And that I'm very passionate about maintaining access and as much as is possible and representing Essex Junction's interests specifically. And, yeah, I don't know if I have anything else to add to my application besides that.
I'm also on that board, I found it personally challenging to meet their requested attendance for some of their committees and the times they meet. Do you have any restrictions during the day? Throughout the month that, you know, sort of, I think their main board meetings are seven thirty to nine thirty on Tuesday, this is a very specific question we don't always ask, but I personally know that this is a challenge for a lot of people, and we've had trouble filling this position due to some of the board. I'm not going to call them requirements, but hopes of their board members, there's also quite a few committees that meet in the middle of the day throughout the month. So I'm just curious if you are aware of that and if you if you think that this, now, I understand this is for the alternate position, so it would be, in this case, it'd be you and I tag teaming when necessary, so that's easier.
Right. I have, I do work full time, but I have a lot of flexibility with my schedule. I can make morning meetings are not an an issue at all. I could make most midday meetings work as well as I, there's, I think, flexibility enough for me to, for it not to be an obstacle.
Great. Yeah, the councilors, Tim, looks like you were, oh, sorry.
From Marcus. Thinking about the challenges and I'm, I know that you're aware of of the challenges that services had, you know, over the last couple of years especially. Do you see any potential low hanging fruit ideas that you might bring to the table to help them kind of overcome some of their challenges as we've, you know, been presented with a variety of options over the last few months from cutting lines to reducing lines, things of this nature, what do you think is could help, do you have?
Yeah, um I think that cutting, you know, it's unfortunate that they have to cut lines. I would, I I think the move to the app, it was also a good move. And I I wonder if there are partnerships of some sort that we can look at. You know, there has to be other alternatives to just cutting lines, I mean, even if it's raising fares isn't an ideal move either. But I would almost, I would look at that before cutting more access than they're already cutting.
Thank you.
I I would like to just say thanks for coming forward, I think it's an important perspective for someone that uses and relies on mass transportation. And it's it's an unique environment that we are in today with with everything, so I just wanted to take a minute and say thanks, I appreciate you coming forward and your willingness to to do this in the perspective that you bring to it, so.
Thank you.
Amber, anything?
Nothing for me. Thanks.
Bethany, we'll let you go easy tonight. That's sort of our way.
Thank you.
Very much appreciate you putting your name in for this. We'll let you know shortly. And, you know, just echo Tim's comments. Appreciate your experience and energy on this.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I should ask, did you have any questions for us?
Um, I don't think I have any at this time, no.
Get jabbed for not asking this question. If you are not chosen for this committee, would you be open to, would you be interested or open to possibilities on other committees?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. I finally remembered to ask that question.
A little bit of growth.
Thank you.
All right. 6B Finance Department of Capital Review Committee brief to council. We have Jess Morris with us tonight.
Good evening, everyone. So the finance department has had another very busy year. We are finally, I'm going to knock on some wood, post-separation. So this look back that I, that is in your packet is more than six months because the last time we talked, we still have a lot of separation work to kind of final details to work through. So that has all been completed. We've got all of our systems separated, working fully independently from the town now, went through our first completely separate tax billing process. We are now fully and adequately staffed in the finance department, which is awesome and refreshing. And are looking forward to, you know, everyone's kind of still settling into their roles. There's a lot of stuff that we do that happens, you know, once a year in some cases, or quarterly, triannually, monthly. So there are a lot of things that we're still kind of finding our groove on. And working through some of the things that we sort of noticed through the budget process or through separation that improvements, efficiencies that we want to try to make, that we noted while we were working through them and starting to kind of tackle that list of the wish list. We did have, as we mentioned earlier, another successful audit for FY '24, so no findings. And in good shape, the audit was a bit of a challenge this year only because we were completely remote with the To Lincoln building renovation shuffle. So presented a challenge, but the auditors that we worked with were awesome and managed to get through it pretty unscathed and pretty easily. So you'll see Bill in a couple of weeks to present that audit. We also, so on the capital committee side, this was kind of the first full year back in the swing of the committee establishing a routine, really. So the committee did some work on re-ranking projects, a few projects. We worked with the city engineer with Hamlin's to update project cost estimates, tried to figure out a proper inflation factor to apply for future costs. And also took all of that information to update the multi-year capital plan that is part of the budget process. And again, with the committee just looking forward to continuing that work, incorporating some of the other city committees and commissions that have an interest in capital projects and getting their input over the next six months or so to help really take a deeper dive on our projects and find out what else is out there that we need to be incorporating into our process. And then one last shameless plug for the Vermont Government Finance Officers Association. So I'm on the board of the Vermont GFOA. And this fall in September, Vermont is hosting the New England State's GFOA Fall Conference. So as the board member, I am participating in not only the planning and coordinating of that event, but also really looking forward to connecting with people outside of Vermont to see how other communities are doing things close to home, but not here. So looking forward to that. Amber, did I miss anything for the capital committee?
I think you did a great job.
Awesome.
Thanks, Jess. And starting from the end, I've done that kind of work for national conventions and stuff like that. It's really exciting. It's a ton of work, but congratulations on your board role and, and getting that close to home. Hopefully you bring back a lot of really interesting info.
Yeah, we have definitely some really cool presenters, keynote speaker. And the sessions that are lined up are, they're going to be really good. I think it's gonna, it's going to be very informative and draw a really good crew of people to, to connect with and learn a lot from.
And it's quite a list. I know that the past two or three years have been difficult or challenging with the unraveling and setting up. And your department is pretty much, you know, integral in most of the projects that, that are undertaken by the other departments. So we appreciate the effort. Does anybody have anything, Marcus?
If you don't mind, Jess, I'd love to hear, since you did call out this, this one event, I'm curious, because I know that you mentioned your involvement. Curious about the whole team. What does development look like for your department in general?
Um, so we have, are you talking about the GFOA work?
Yeah, I mean, for, for all of your team, so that you're all getting, you know, that expanded experience, training, opportunity, network, or whatever, you know, you believe your, your team requires in order to, you know, skill up.
Yeah. So we're pretty lucky. A lot of the training opportunities that we have are offered to us at no cost. So the state, the auditor's office does regular webinars, basically on different things that are coming down the pike from a federal or a state level. We also have access to Nemrick, our finance software. Does a good job of kind of keeping tabs on those changes that are happening, whether it be payroll taxes to financial reporting, anything in between. They also offer free workshops, I'll call them, and seminars. There's an annual, there's a couple annual seminars that happen every year without fail regarding year-end process, audit prep, things like that. So all of the staff has access to any of that. We actually, Shannon and I are going to be attending one on Friday on the cash receipt module. So hoping to just pick up little bits and pieces wherever we can to bring back to the whole team. So through the Vermont GFOA, I encourage my entire team to take advantage, even though they aren't members, they can still participate in the workshops for a fee. I am also a member of the National GFOA Organization. So those, they tend to be a little bit more pricey. So what I try to do is take those and bring that knowledge back to the team. Just at one of our team check-ins, I'll kind of run down through things that were learned and bring all the documentation back. And it's saved in a central repository that we all have access to. And just really encouraging connection with other communities. So, you know, if there's a weird thing that comes up in a payroll or an EP process, or, you know, we're working through the stormwater utility set up in the, in the finance system right now, encouraging the team to reach out and make connections to their counterparts in neighboring communities. Because one of, one of the theories I operate under is don't reinvent the wheel. If someone's already done it, like, and it's, it works, copy it. It's okay to steal things from other towns. And so it's, it's been a, I think, a bonus through the separation process that we do still have that connection with the town. So we reach out to them on a regular basis, just to bounce ideas around or find out how they're doing things. So although it feels like a disconnected community in the finance world, we actually do have a lot of ways that we can connect. It just takes a little more effort on our part.
Amber, do you have anything for Jess?
I was just going to say, thanks, Jess, for all of your help and keeping me on task, which I definitely need. Appreciate it.
That's for sure. Wow. In all seriousness, this budget year was made a lot easier. And I think we had a lot of good background having enterprise estimates earlier. And that was something we've been hoping for, for a long time. And even though, you know, understanding a lot of the systems weren't where you wanted them to be for budgeting, still really appreciate having that information early. I won't be around for the next round, but I'm sure it's going to be different with the Nemrick system up and what that looks like. So.
Yeah, every time, every time we go through a process, we make it a little bit better. So, and learn what we can change the next time.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you joining us. We'll see you in a few minutes, I think.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to 6C, discussion in consideration of stormwater-related ordinances, amendments to ordinance 19, the stormwater permit transfer, and new ordinance 20, stormwater management. And Chelsea Mendigo's here.
Hello.
Who is not joining us tonight is the question.
You got several staff here. Oh, right. So if you recall, back in November and December, we had two public hearings on three proposed ordinances for stormwater management in the city. Chapter 19, which was pre-existing, it was one that we formed with the Town of Essex. It needed to be updated to reflect being a city-only ordinance. We had chapter 20, which is the stormwater management ordinance. That is largely what was in the land development code. That didn't belong in the land development code. So that's been moved out. And then we have chapter 21, which is the ordinance to form the stormwater utility. And we also discussed the credit manual that goes with the stormwater utility. We collected public, or we collected comments from the public during that process. And then I was asked to summarize it in a document, which was provided in tonight's packet. And I'm happy to go over that if you'd like. And then, so since then, as I think we discussed at the last city council meeting, it was determined that Global Foundries is exempt from the utility. And so we had to update the stormwater utility to include Global Foundries parcel. And we've met with Global Foundries and there's still some conversations and questions that need to be addressed. So at this time, we're wanting to hold on chapter 21 ordinance being approved in the credit manual. But chapter 19 and 20 have not been changed. So the recommendation is that we could go ahead and approve those tonight. And then in the memo, it just outlined, the bottom part of the memo outlines the process of adopting an ordinance and the way that the public can comment on it once it's adopted, or petition against it, I should say. But like I said, it is being recommended to adopt chapter 19 amendments and chapter 20 ordinance for stormwater regulation.
In reviewing the comments that you provided answers for, I feel like they're almost exclusively regarding chapter 21.
They are. Yeah.
All right. So I don't think we need to go through those tonight.
Sure, sure. That's fine.
Everybody's all right with that. Is anyone on the council, Amber, anybody have any questions or comments on this? We've had a public hearing on this. Feels largely technical to me.
When do we anticipate, when do we anticipate having the details regarding global?
We hope to be able to bring that back forward on March 12th. One thing I'll just point out, so there's a little bit of overlap in some of your business items tonight. So in the public hearing, Chris mentioned that some of the stormwater regulations are being pulled out of the land development code amendments. That is what is in ordinance 20 here. So this is sort of lined up on your agenda on purpose in this order so that we get ordinance 20 adopted before you make changes to the land development code.
That makes sense. Actually, I understand that. Marcus?
So I, we call out Global Foundries here. What other properties are potentially having similar concerns that Global Foundries will? Because I assume it's about the land space and number of ERUs they would potentially be.
I'm going to jump in here for a second because we're not actually considering that chapter tonight. And it doesn't, I don't think it's going to apply necessarily to these two, unless you're, unless it ties into these specifically. Are you referring to the stormwater utility or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious, because again, we're mentioning here that, that Global Found, you know, one of the reasons why this would be Paul, you know, that we're not doing 21.
That makes sense.
So I'm just curious what other properties are potentially being impacted in similar fashion.
Yeah, so the there are, by doing it as a utility, we're trying to be as equitable as possible because the, the purpose of the stormwater utility is to base the fee on actual impervious service. So the utility as a whole, as proposed, applies to all the properties in the city. Our property is included. So one answer to your question is everybody. Every, you know, all properties are, are interested in trying to sort through what this cost is and what its impact is going to be on them. We, global is a unique property, statewide, unique property. They are regulated in different ways than other folks are. And so there are just some questions we're continuing to try to figure out in terms of whether there is any, anything within their permitting structure that essentially prohibits us from incorporating them into the utility. Those are the questions that we are trying to sort through right now.
Amber, do you have anything?
I think I'm all set.
Okay.
Thanks.
So the memo is on, just read this. Page 10, the packet has recommended motions.
I move that the city council approve the amendments to the Essex Junction Municipal Ordinance, Chapter 19, an ordinance relating, an ordinance establishing permit transfer authority for expired and unpermitted discharges to impaired waterways and adopt Essex Junction Municipal Ordinance, Chapter 20, an ordinance relating to stormwater management regulations.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Chelsea.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. So moving on to, as Virginia mentioned, the land development code, discussion in consideration of land development code amendments. Chris is still here. So we had the public hearing. We've talked about this a couple of times, at least. Are there any further questions or comments from council? Amber's shaking her head no online. All right, well, I will then search my packet for the.
It is page 41.
Wonderful. Thank you. Does the board feel like we're ready to pass these amendments? All right. All right. Tim, you want to do it again?
Yeah. I move that the city council approve the land development code amendments as presented.
Second. Excellent. All those in favor say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Chris, thank you. Thank you to the planning commission for, feels like a year plus of work. Just a tremendous, unbelievable amount of work went into this. Appreciate it. All right. Six C, discussion and consideration of the FY26 General Fund operating and capital budgets.
So, talked about this a few times. So what you've got in front of you is the budget essentially not very much changed since the last time you saw it. As we talked about last time, we saw that county tax dollar amount change. Just so folks are aware, that is, that county tax is used to count, help cover and fund the Chittingen County Court System and the sheriff. Had a good conversation with the assistant judges to have a better understanding of why their budget has increased. And that really is associated with health insurance costs, just like the rest of us. Building security for the courthouse, maintenance and repairs for the sheriff's building. And it also includes their audit costs, which they only ever do their audit every other year. So you're going to see that cost go up from, from one year to the next. There is also a note change in the lot fund to correctly identify the assigned lot fund balance that we had talked about back in June. So those two items are in there. There is one outstanding item potentially, if you would like to talk further about, which came up at our last meeting. When we had the discussion about moving forward with the stormwater utility as opposed to funding the stormwater program through the general fund. Because that stormwater utility, the way that it is structured, is based on the number of ERUs, meaning it's really based on the amount of impervious surface on the property. For properties that have a decent amount of impervious surface, that's a big dollar amount right off. So staff is suggesting a possibility of phasing that full program amount in. So the first year, we could pull out the 125,000 in capital savings that we're essentially hoping to kind of build as a necessary dollar amount that we can use for the capital projects we need in that program over time. But we could pull that out in the first year. So that, that would be phase one of incorporating this. Then in phase two, we would bring that 125,000 back into the enterprise fund. Just mentioning it here because there was a question at the last meeting about whether that 125,000 or close to 125,000 could be covered in the general fund. That is, it is closely aligned to the 110,000 for the unassigned fund balance. From staff's perspective, we think your general fund is solid as is, and we can manage for the first year of the enterprise fund by just not accounting for that 120, 125,000. So assuming no further changes, your, the proposed budget is 12,419, 12,419,000. Don't question, George, when you come back and you say, you only said 12,419, 12,419,241 dollars.
Which was on the warning.
What is on the warning? With 11,405,931 levied in taxes. Also what you've got in here in the memo are what the capital budgets are looking like as well. So the capital fund reserve at 1.8 million, rolling stock fund at 8.67, and recreation capital reserve at 114. And our recommendation is to approve the budget. So we can put it to the voters.
Thank you Regina. And this is a 2.6% increase, tax rate increase. Okay. Great. Amber, anything on this topic?
Nope, all good. Thank you.
Okay, anybody?
Not at this time.
Okay. Any comment from anyone in the room? Okay.
I can appreciate that, George. You gotta do it while you're thinking of it.
Yeah. Is there anyone online that has any questions or comments on this topic on the budget? Before we bring it back to the council for a decision. It's not appear so. I don't see any hands raised or anyone in muting. So we'll bring it back to the council. Doesn't sound like we have any changes or adjustments. So entertain a motion. Good.
Guess I'm, what I'm still struggling with is, just want to acknowledge it, and I said this the last time, is I appreciate the phased-in approach. I appreciate the care and consideration for, for property owners here. But I, I still, there's a portion of me that still struggles with the fact that there is a price that has to be paid in order to do the services that we're providing. By doing it this way, in, in such a way, that we are putting a portion of this in the program of the enterprise. And a portion of this in general. I think it, to a certain degree, adds also a level of, of difficulty in understanding this for residents. And let me be frank, that I think that if we were to agree to this today, they will forget by the time we have to discuss this next year. And we're saying to the public, we have to add 125,000 because.
So the recommendation in front of you is to not do what you just said. We are putting the complete stormwater program into the enterprise utility budget 100%. It will just not have in this first year, as we are contemplating it right now. It will not have that 125,000 per capital.
Okay, thanks. But that's what I, I, that's what I thought coming into this discussion. And then I just heard you, but I heard you say it differently. So my apologies. Thank you.
Yep. Our, our recommendation is that you're, we are not saying that, agree with you that it is confusing this year. I will just add that you are not approving the enterprise budget tonight. So that is still a topic for a conversation in, in the future. But this general fund budget that you have in front of you does not have stormwater in it.
All right.
Pretty good?
Sure.
I move that the city council approve the FY26 General Fund operating and capital program budget as presented.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye. Amber, I didn't hear you. Sorry.
Aye.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. Thank you Regina. Thank you Jess. Thank you department heads.
Yeah.
Appreciate all the work that went into this. Okay. Which brings us to the warning, discussion and consideration of informational hearing and annual meeting warning.
So page 148 in the packet. So this includes article one. So that is the budget that we just discussed. It includes article two, which is the bond vote for the pump stations, which we discussed at your last meeting. And we have three separate elections, a city council member, Champlain Water District Commissioner, and a library trustee. As a reminder to folks, Champlain Water District Commissioner was always one seat between the town and the village. So village residents would have been used to voting for this three-year elected term collectively with the town. That three-year seat has now run out. And now both of us, the town and the city, will be electing each of their own commissioners. Deadline for petitions was last February 20th, was the last Thursday, I believe. And we didn't get any petitions for any additional questions for the warning. So the warning as drafted in your packet is the correct version.
And the deadline for petitions for candidates for the water district and for city council and for library trustee.
Monday, the 3rd.
Great. Any questions on this from council? No? Great. Then I will move the city council approve the warning as drafted.
I'll second.
Great. All in favor say aye.
Sorry.
Thank you. Pass unanimously. I'm gonna do this before we forget because we forget things. Okay, the next business item is actually executive session. So entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Give a second.
I'll second.
Wait. Yes, great. Tim. What just happened there? Sorry. Yeah, it's okay. All those in favor say aye. Amber, we're, you gotta give it a second between the unmute.
Aye.
Think you'd have this perfected. Great. Council member comments and city manager report.
I don't have anything particular for the manager's report.
Great. I don't have anything to do either myself. All right. Reading file and then executive session. Motions are on page 152. Yes.
152.
Move that the city council enter into executive session to discuss a personal, personnel evaluation pursuant to 1VSA 31383 to include the city council and city manager.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Excellent. We have one more. I move the city council enter into executive session to discuss the appointment of public officials pursuant to 1VSA Section 31383 to include the city manager.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Great. We are gonna take a recess and then we'll be in executive session. We will be coming back. Yes. All right.
Recording in progress.
Okay, city council is back in session. I will move us along and make a motion. I move we appoint Bethany Clark as an alternate to the Green Mountain Transit Border Commissioners with a term expiring on June 30th, 2027.
Marcus.
Marcus, great. All those in favor say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you Bethany. If you're listening, if you're not, someone will reach out very shortly. With that, I will move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. We adjourn. Thanks, everybody.